Okay, thank you. We're gonna go ahead and. One second. Okay, so we're gonna call this meeting to order at 6:05 PM. And. Let's see. Commissioner Navarrete, can you please lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
Is your hand over here? Ready? Begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with the routine justice for all.
Thank you. So we're gonna move on to roll call.
Present.
Commissioner Figueroa, present. Mr. Gonzalez.
Here.
Commissioner Liad.
Present.
Vice Chair Navarrete.
Present.
Chair Beahan.
Here. Thank you. We're moving on to approval of the agenda.
Sorry, Chair. Now, I just want to also alternate alternate Commissioner Quatidis.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, so we're gonna move on to approval of the agenda. At this time, the commission may announce any items being pulled from the agenda or continue to another date or request the moving of an item on the agenda. Do we have any requests from commissioners at this time? And from staff?
None for staff.
Okay, so can we get a motion to approve the agenda as is?
Well, you know what? Just one thing I'm thinking, maybe if I could get a shot of hands, people that might be here for the heavy industrial zone item. So there might, there looks like there's people here for an item that we're recommending continuance on. So if you wanted to settle that earlier, but it all depends on the planning commission. So I just want to bring that to your attention.
Thank you. Is this item number five?
Item number five.
Okay.
So it's up to the commission.
Okay, can someone make a motion or recommendation?
A motion to move item number five in front of item number three in the public hearing.
I'll second the motion.
Thank you.
Can we go or can we do, can we move the public hearing in front of the non-hearing items?
I don't think we can. Henry, are you there?
Yeah, I'm here.
I think we'd have to keep it on the public hearing calendar, right?
Yes.
After the non-hearing.
Yes, you could keep it in the public hearing.
Okay, so then I'll keep that motion. We need item number five in front of item number three in the public hearing calendar.
I'll second the motion.
Thank you. And can we get roll call, please?
Commissioner Figueroa.
Hi.
Commissioner Gonzalez.
Hi.
Commissioner Liad.
Hi.
Commissioner Navarrete.
Hi.
And Chair Beahan.
Hi. Thank you. We're gonna move on to approval of the minutes. And this is for meeting minutes from the planning commission meeting July 20th, 2022, and meeting minutes for July 26, 2022. Did everyone get an opportunity to look at the minutes? And do we have any changes or recommendations for those minutes? Okay, can we get a motion to approve meeting minutes for July 20th and July 26, 2022?
Motion to approve the minutes as presented for the meeting of July 20th, 2022.
I'll second.
Thank you.
Commissioner Figueroa's motion.
Thank you. Can we get roll call, please?
Commissioner Figueroa.
Hi.
Commissioner Gonzalez.
Hi.
Commissioner Liad.
Hi.
Vice Chair Navarrete.
Stand.
And Chair Beahan.
Hi. Thank you. We're moving on to written communications. Do we have anything, staff?
No written communications.
Okay, so we're gonna move on to public comments on non-agenda items. The public may address the commission on any item of interest to the public that is not on the agenda, but is within the subject matter jurisdiction thereof. Please limit your comments to three minutes. Do we have any public comments at this time?
There are no hands raised.
Thank you. Okay, we're gonna move on to reports and requests. Any reports from staff at this time?
No reports from staff.
Okay, and any requests from commissioners? Okay, we're moving on to our non-hearing items. So item number two is Coachella Research Park Number Two Landscape and Order Control Plan Review. Whenever you're ready.
I have a presentation on this, and this item is a non-hearing item because it's an approved project already. It's a cannabis cultivation project in the auto wrecking zone of the city off of Harrison Street. And so one of the conditions of approval for that project for Coachella Research Park Number Two is that the landscaping and odor control plan, the final landscape plan, come back to the planning commission for review. Next slide, please. Oh. There you go. This is location, so 48451 Harrison Street. It's on 20 acres. It was formerly the site of the desert truck and auto park business, and now it will be a future cultivation facility. This project was approved in 2019, and it included these entitlements, which included a conditional use permit variance, tenant parcel map, but it also included an architectural review. The project is six buildings totaling 505,520 square feet, which includes four buildings for greenhouses and and then two actual office building structures, 668 parking spaces, there's a development agreement approved for the project that that really established the taxation rate for cultivation. But you might know that the city council adopted a new taxation rate, so that taxation rate in the development agreement is now void, and the new one applies. So this is the previous condition with the previous business where they stored vehicles. So that has changed, and there's construction that's going on. So this is what it looks like right now. So they're building that building one for the greenhouse, and they're starting to build that that entry kiosk to the to the site. This, the project was modified. It actually had more buildings, and it was modified so that had the total of six that you see on the screen. At this time, the applicant is proposing only the greenhouse building that is in the yellow and to the north. And here's a brief change in in the site plan. So this is what was approved. So you could see the greenhouse buildings towards the back. In the front, you have those those office and processing buildings, buildings one and two. And in the front, you have parking and a large landscape area for the retention basin. So if you look at this, you could see that there's a parking area just the south of retention basin, and the entrance would have been on the south side of the project. It actually changed so that the entrance would be to the north. So so that was a minor change, and we, that was kind of administrative change that we were able to do through the plant check, but the retention basin, basically, everything was just flipped. The previous landscape plan that was presented, there was actually two. So it's hard to, there wasn't anything in the file to demonstrate which one was actually the final one. But this is the one when the project consisted of more than six buildings, and so it had a lot more landscaping in terms of shade trees, a lot more elaborate landscaping in the retention basin, and kind of some park areas in there, if you can see, see that. The one that actually finally went to city council, and it was in a slide presentation, was this one. And this one actually has swapped out shade trees for palm trees. So if you could see the landscape fingers, the landscape areas all around the parking areas for buildings four, five, six, and three. It's a little bit different, right? And you can see the retention basin a little bit different as well. This one had, you know, kind of that riprap at the bottom of the retention basin. And they were proposing hydroseed in the retention basin. You could see a lot more trees around the perimeter. And then this, this one didn't really have many trees on the perimeter, except for the north, where they have the palm trees and the landscape fingers. So the new landscape plan, this is the frontage. So I try to actually piece it together because the plan that you got shows it in different, different pieces. And so they don't, they proposed DG mostly in the retention basin, and then some trees around the perimeter. The original landscape design had about 15 big palms in the project, and so they're not proposing any of the regular day palm trees. They're proposing some, what's called a pygmy day palm tree. So that would be much smaller than a regular day palm tree. And so the palm trees that you see in the retention basin would be California palms. So they proposed actually quite a, quite a few California palms in this plan. And then this is just a comparison of the approved versus the proposed in terms of how the perimeter was treated. So the, actually, after, if you reverse it, the the top, the black and white is is what is proposed. And so you could see that there's probably a little bit less shrubs than were anticipated initially when the project was proposed to the city, and there was more trees around the perimeter. There are proposing some trees still on the perimeter, which would be the palm trees. The trees that are proposed are these. So so 117 California palms, and then the other trees that are proposed are as shown. But but really, the trees that are proposed are kind of dominated by the California palm on the whole site plan. And this is the proposed shrubs. So the proposed plants, the varieties actually decreased from 16 to eight varieties. Actually, don't have much to say about that. I would be okay with it, just considering this is what you would, is proposed. But the planning commission could weigh in on that to see if they want anything more than than what's presented. This also includes review of the odor control plan. So actually, there, this was a slide that went to the city council a couple of years ago. And they're proposing this filtering system to address odor control. And that's changed slightly. So the staff report, it describes the system, which is a micro coal fog system that's attached to the ceiling of the greenhouses. And so there are nozzles at the top of the the greenhouse, and it releases these, this liquid that works to neutralize odors and traps them and biodegrades the odor. And so as far as the odor control staff is actually okay with the odor control plan and the change, and staff would monitor the effectiveness of the odor control system. And so that's a requirement for all our projects. So if if the system doesn't work, then we require them to change their system. And then this is an exhibit from that plan, and it shows where those nozzles are within the greenhouse that would release that liquid and work to neutralize odors. As far, we had some landscape planner recommendations because I uncovered that other landscape plan today. You know, some of the the recommendations I had about the California palm and actually reducing it all the way down to 30. I definitely not set on that anymore. So if they want to increase that more, I'm okay with that. And that's something that the planning commission can weigh in on. But I would recommend maintaining the original 15 day palm trees. I know that's been something the planning commission wants to make sure are in projects when they're proposed, and if someone's recommending a change, really that we maintain those. And so maybe having those at the front of the project. So the other is, we had a recommendation of increasing the quantity of shrubs and mainly around the perimeter. And so that the perimeter landscape areas around the parking areas don't just stay decomposed granite, but there's actually more shrubs that are that are included. I didn't identify account, but if you, the planning commission would like to weigh in on what you'd like to see, that would, that would be good for this item. There was accent boulders that were recommended, and we're taking out. So we recommend including those only in the frontage area. And then rather than doing decomposed granite, you know, that that be replaced with three-quarter inch decomposed granite. And that's kind of like the small rock that you would see kind of the new Starbucks that went out there. So just think that would be a better look. Maintain the original cobblestone concept, the bottom of the retention basin. And then the only other recommendation is that they use deep well irrigation for trees, which means that they don't have bubblers that stick up above the ground, which is easier to vandalize. So that's just a recommendation that we have. And then lastly, the applicant is, so this is the building that they're constructing right now in improvements along the frontage, but they are proposing the temporary modular facility for processing the plants that are cultivated in the greenhouse. And so it's actually shown in back. So it'd be a modular structure that proposing for 24 months. And staff can can do the approval at staff level, but we would actually present this to you for your input and consideration, and also regarding the amount of time that this would be temporary. So staff is okay with 24 month period recommended. And staff recommends that the planning commission approve the odor control plan and landscape plan, subject to the recommended changes by the by city staff. That's the end of my presentation. Happy to answer any questions, and I believe the applicant is participating. Please.
Thank you, Gabe. Okay, so this is a non-hearing item. Do we have any comments or questions from commissioners at this time?
My question would be why, why they change it to the California palm? It's aesthetics, or is there an actual function behind it?
Yeah, I don't know. And I know Bill Sanchez is probably representing the applicant, and he could probably speak to that when you would like to ask him this question.
We could probably raise questions and then have him speak and kind of touch base on all of our questions. At the same time, do we have any other questions?
Yeah, do you have a picture of an elevation, landscape elevation on the on the original drawings?
There, there wasn't a landscape elevation. It was just a landscape plan, like an aerial.
Aerial photo, yeah. So, you know, my concern is just is trying to keep as close as we can to to at least the entry or the front portion of the project. The outside portion, I'm not really concerned about, but, you know, I'll go ahead and go with staff recommendation, but I'd like to get as close as we can to the original drawings on on the front elevations or the front part of the building.
Yeah, and just to comment on that really quick, Commissioner Gonzalez. So you saw like there was like two plans in the past.
Yeah.
And it's hard to tell which one was which. So one plant had a lot more shrubs in the back. Maybe there was like too many shrubs in the back. The other one almost like minimized everything, you know, very bare bones. And so I think there's some room for kind of compromise there because just doing that in the back where no one sees it is maybe not the best way to go.
Yeah, I'm good with the DG instead of the grass, you know, the middle bit drought and stuff. So I think that the DG would work perfectly. As long as, you know, it's aesthetically, you know, right colors and.
And then the question is the odor control. So this substance they're supposed to use. Other buildings like this in other areas in the desert still smell. So is that because the services at those other places, talking like desert hot springs, North Palm Springs area, they have a lot of, you can sit outside of that dens or in the area right there, you get off a part of pump gas and still smells. So is that different than theirs? And I'm going to smell a strong, or is it going to have certain time periods? And is it going to carry based on the wind into the community? And so that's the the question I have. How is that played out? What the mitigation is?
Yeah, no, it's a good question. Maybe that's also something the applicant can speak to. I don't know the systems that the other communities that you're talking about utilize, but yeah, I could see how that would be a concern. The the applicants have to get a cannabis regulatory permit every year renewed. Part of that is making sure that they're compliant with odor control plan, that there's no odor coming from the site. So we could regularly regulate that through that process. So so we'll see how this goes, right? And, you know, if you have any other recommendations or control plan, something comes back to the planning commission, that's something that we consider.
What's the impact on the radius, impact radius, or, I mean, there's not a community.
Yeah, it's close.
Few thousand feet, isn't it?
Yeah, well, yeah, it's pretty separated from residential. But then again, the the system is within a contained building. So the the expectation is that that doesn't get released outside of the building. And then if you read the odor control plan, like, you know, it's not considered a hazardous chemical. But, you know, I never use the system. I haven't seen it operate. But maybe the applicant can actually describe that a little more if they have that experience.
Thank you. Do we have any other comments or questions from commissioners? Okay, I think we can allow the applicant to unmute themselves. Mr. Sanchez.
Hi, good evening. Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Okay, this is Bill Sanchez. First of all, I want to apologize. Me and the the rest of our team were under the impression that the Syrians were still being held via Zoom. And so that's why we're not there today. Otherwise, we would have been there. But nonetheless, thank you, Gabe, for for putting this staff report together. And and, you know, some of the the questions that were brought up, I want to go ahead and answer, one of them being the 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 removal of the date palms. I'm not quite sure exactly what happened. But if we had some of those palms, I'm sorry, it just got so. We can, we can include some of the palms and 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 work with staff on some of the recommendations to enhance the the frontage, if you will, of the project. As I mentioned to Gabe previously, I don't think he mentioned that one of the reasons why we thinned out the the landscaping onsite around the greenhouses was because the nature of the ventilation to the, for the building. The the buildings are such that the fans in the middle create a negative pressure and suck air in through the end walls, bringing the the outside air into the grow rooms. They travel through the plants into the middle corridor, and then they're exhausted out the fans that then they they get sprayed with an odor mitigation product before they're released out into the the air. So that was the primary reason why we 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 send out the landscaping onsite. We're happy to work with with Gabriel on on bringing the frontage landscaping back to somewhat of its original state. I think we'd be okay with the larger decomposed granite. However, I don't know how the larger three-quarter inch granite would work with the cobblestone down the middle. It looks like that I envisioned two separate rocks in that area, but I can work with Gabriel on coming up with something that that's aesthetically pleasing. I also have with me the project architect and the actual operator that they may be able to answer your questions regarding the odor mitigation. So I don't know if Dylan or Bill Sharon, if you guys want to jump in and help out with that. How do we?
On the landscape part, Mr. Sanchez, that, you know, personally, I'm the pumpkin guy. And I'd like to see some day palms instead of the fan palms. If you could actually work with staff and and include some fat, some day palms in there. I think.
Yeah, absolutely. There's.
Yeah, on the front portion, on the front portion of the property.
Yes, not a problem.
Okay, perfect.
Okay.
I mean, so the other two individuals that are available to answer any questions specifically pertaining to the odor mitigation are Bill Sharon and Dylan, who are online as well. I don't know. I guess you gotta turn me up and turn them on.
Yeah, yeah, they can. I think they're able to unmute themselves.
Okay.
Yeah, this is Bill Sharon. Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, I'm the architect on the project. So I think that it just to make sure you understand how the odor mitigation system works is like Bill said, that this uses a evaporative cooling system to cool the plants since it's in a greenhouse, and that sucks air through the sidewalls, the the long walls of the of the structure into the middle through a baffled and into the hallway, and then the air is sucked out through a series of fans that are moving down the the central corridor. Outside of each one of those fans is a ring that sprays this this liquid that mixes with the odor and and then they say it biodegrades the odor so that you won't, you don't smell it. And that's the system that that's going to be used in this particular instance.
Will it? Oh, I'm sorry.
No, I'm done. I just want to make sure that you guys understood the system. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to try to answer.
Would this be similar to, I guess, the process that's used in neighboring cities? Or is this totally new technology?
Well, this is a little different because we're a greenhouse situation. We have multiple fans, and all the fans will have this ring around it, whereas they tend to have one just exit if it's an indoor facility that they can, that they control it from.
Quick question on the fans. Are they? How loud are the fans? Because I know that at least at the county, that's something that we hear a lot is in in certain cities, the fans are incredibly loud, and communities close by, homes close by are able to hear them.
I don't know. We could probably get you. I'm sure that there's been a test run. We can get you a decibel reading. I I can't tell you. I know that they're they're not high-speed fans because there's so many of them. So they run at a lower RPM, and that tends just to be a low drone as opposed to a high, a high wine like you might get with a high-velocity fan that's that's being used to exit air out of like an enclosed, completely enclosed facility. But I think there's some 80-some fans across the top so that that kind of spreads the load out and and the noise out, too. Because again, they could, they could run at a lower speed than the than a single fan that's that's evacuating a indoor facility.
Okay, thank you.
You mentioned something, Gabe, about going back and revisiting if there was a concern with the with the orders that, did you say that?
Oh, yeah. So if if they try the system, and let's say this system doesn't work, right? We we experienced that in the next, throughout this year, or actually at any point in time, we can go back to them and say that you need to change your odor control plan. Really, the hook for us is the cannabis regulatory permit that they have to get renewed. They have to show that to the state. So so we have ability to ensure that it's enforced through current enforcement or through the regulatory permit.
Okay, perfect. I think that's fair.
Thank you. Any other questions from commissioners? Okay. Do we have a motion?
Yeah, I'll go ahead and motion in favor of staff's recommendation alongside trying to get more day pumps in the front.
So working on the frontage, basically, not so much focusing on the back side that, you know, probably not have such an impact.
Can I just make a comment on that just to get clarity? So Bill Sanchez raised a pretty good point. So if there is a move to the three-quarters inch rock, maybe the impact of the cobblestone at the at the bottom isn't as pronounced, right? Because that was assuming there was going to be hydroseed or DG around it, smaller grain. So it may make sense not to have the cobblestone if you have like the larger like DG.
You can, you can do a combination of both, I guess, and.
Or you can, yeah. But it's up to the, yeah. But it won't be as pronounced as before when it was going to be just decomposed granite.
If they're multicolor, you know, you do the DG and then then also the cobblestone. That's pretty nice. So.
So to the commission.
Yeah, okay.
Okay. Well, considering what Gabe said, I don't know.
We can add stipulation, can't we?
You can. Yeah. So I mean, if he's making a motion right now.
If you want to make a different one.
So it's either modify it or somebody else.
Modify the motion to to add the decomposed granite alongside the granite.
And the cobblestone.
Oh, and the cobblestone.
Oh, and the cobblestone.
I'll second, uh, Commissioner Navarrete's motion.
Okay, can we get, do we have any other motion, different motion at this time? Okay, can we get roll call, please?
Commissioner Figueroa?
Aye.
Commissioner Gonzalez? Commissioner Lial?
Aye.
Chair Navarrete?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Okay, so we're going to move on to our public hearing calendar and.
We're going to put five, because we moved that one up.
And during the approval of the agenda, we went ahead and made a change. So item number five moved up before item number three. So we are going to go to item number five, which is zoning ordinance amendment number twenty-two dash zero seven. Whenever you're ready, staff.
Yeah, thank you, Chair, members of the Plan Commission. This item is zoning ordinance amendment twenty-two dash zero seven. And this involves amendments to the zoning code with respect to allowable uses in the heavy industrial zone. And just some quick background on this, um, this is some of the language of what was presented to the Plan Commission back in two thousand and eighteen. So this zoning ordinance amendment was once presented to the Plan Commission and was recommended for approval to the city council. And, uh, the idea of it is that, uh, some of permitted uses in the heavy industrial zone, uh, may be considered significant, have environmental effects that, uh, may require further study or conditions. And so there are some of those uses that would be considered as a right. So essentially not requiring like a special conditional use permit for a public hearing. And, uh, and so the idea was to, um, consider placing some of the uses as conditional permitted uses, right? So there'd be a conditional use permit that they would have to obtain from the Plan Commission. Um, and so that was approved by the Plan Commission November seventh, two thousand and eighteen. Um, and it never ended up being considered by the city council. Um, but, uh, there was some renewed interest, uh, by council member to bring this back, um, and, and be considered. Uh, just to give you some background, well, what is the MH, uh, heavy industrial zone? So this is a map that gives you an idea of what that zone is. So everything that's in that kind of pinkish purple is the heavy industrial zone. So it includes the area south of Avenue fifty-two, uh, east of the railroad and all the way down to like the sanitary plant in the city. But also on the other side of the A six expressway, which is really undeveloped right now and agricultural. And there are some areas, um, north of Avenue fifty-four and just, um, east of Tyler Street. Uh, it also caught, uh, includes Arm Tech. So this is basically the affected zone, um, for the potential zone changes. But just to kind of give you an idea, if you were here at the Plan Commission, these were the uses and the, the primary uses that were being considered. So they would be considered by right uses. Um, so the ones that were crossed out on here were the ones that we're going to move to the conditional use permit category for cotton gin, cotton gins, oil mills, vegetable oil plants, heavy material fabrication, uh, well, paint, oil, shellac, turpentine, varnish manufacturing, uh, poultry dressing and packaging, slaughterhouse, uh, soap manufacturer. So that would all move to conditional use permits. And the ordinance would add additional language under conditional use permit that would include expansions of floor area and expansion of the footprint of existing structures for the following uses. And so you could see those, those uses that were crossed out would be placed in the conditional use permit category as such. Um, and this would also add a new category for food waste processing and manufacturing in the conditional use permit. So at this time, staff does recommend that this item be continued. We actually did have a meeting with, uh, IWP, uh, Imperial Western Products that, um, last week about this item on a separate matter. And we'd mentioned that we were, uh, going to present this item for the Plan Commission. Um, they did provide a email that should have been on the dice for you recommending, uh, that the Plan Commission, uh, uh, either, um, continue or, or not consider the item. And so, um, you know, staff feels that we should have some further discussion with some of the stakeholders that are affected. Just to discuss it further, uh, I know one of the things that, uh, was mentioned is, you know, since they are existing use, they would prefer not to be affected and have this ordinance apply to new uses that haven't established themselves in that area. Uh, so those are all things that we can consider. Um, some of the other businesses that we thought might be impacted might be like Burt Tech. Uh, may include like Arm Tech. So at least having a conversation with them to get their feedback and then coming back at another time, Plan Commission. So, uh, so that makes sense. You know, as far as staff's concerned, to be able to make sure the stakeholders, we've heard, you know, their concerns. Uh, and maybe there's a way to, uh, make changes that kind of address those concerns. Um, I know, I talked this over with, uh, legal counsel today and I think, uh, Henry, I think you had some other thoughts too, based on some of the comments that we received today.
Yes, and since Burt Tech and, um, IWP are waste management, there's some pretty strict regulations on what the city can and can't do. So we would want some time to consider that as well.
Um, so the, the, the recommendation is continue the item indefinitely. So that's up to the Plan Commission. Sometimes the continuation is through a date certain. Uh, we just don't know when we can do all that, come back to the Plan Commission. Uh, but, uh, just want to put that in front of you. And if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer your question.
I'm going to recommend that we do a study session maybe in the future. I think that's, uh, that would probably be the ideal scenario, just to locate it more detail. And then maybe we can bring up some of the IWP and Arm Tech and.
And, uh, yeah.
Just have a meeting of the minds, I guess.
Yeah, I think you bring up a good point, um, in when we get these items, right? Sometimes we don't know, I think as commissioners, if stakeholders have been, um, taken into consideration or if there's been a conversation. So I think you bring up a good point of being able to do that beforehand and then I don't see a problem with continuing the item indefinitely. I don't think we're in a rush to. Personally, I don't think we're in a rush to, to hear it. I think it's important that we even do have or consider having a study session to really understand more of the zoning ordinance amendments. Commissioners, I don't know if you have any.
So my question is, this came back up because it was never approved, right? That's, that's the underlying, the reason why it's here today.
Correct.
Okay. Correct.
My only comment would be that I think it's not, not, it's pretty much necessary to go into, uh, to move this a little bit into an indefinite date, just because we have stakeholders here that feel like they want properly noticed. And I think it's our duty as the commission here to serve the community. And give them their, their proper, uh, time to speak on, on items like this that not only affect them, but will indefinitely affect the future of Coachella and how it's going to develop in the future. Yeah, and thank you, Commissioner. One more thing I want to mention is, you know, we do want some direction too. So if there's other things that you want us to investigate for this ordinance, uh, uh, this is kind of based on something that was presented to Plan Commission in the past. Uh, but if there's something else that you want to give us direction regarding the zone, I feel free to let us know.
Just to clarify, on one of the slides you showed, I was a little bit confused, but you showed some, if you can go back to, uh, businesses or, or, um, the ordinance change, there are some things that are crossed off.
Yeah.
Right here. So those crossed off would need ACUP or those that are not crossed off would need it.
Yeah, so this is what, what's called primary uses would be the list of items.
Okay.
Uh, businesses that are permitted by right.
Okay.
So like essentially they can move into it and make this same building and start operating. Um, and the, that got moved here. So the underlying is those cross out items in the conditional use permit category now.
Okay.
There's a couple other, um, businesses that come, that come to mind. We have a couple of the gas company here that are now in the middle of town. So we're going to have to visit that one day and then realistically look at how we're going to assist or, or work on putting them in the heavy industrial area instead of being in the middle of town. And, you know, really it's a public safety issue because if something ever goes wrong, I mean, it's not going to be good. And they're basically in the middle of town and we don't, we don't have to point them up personally, but we already know who they are and we just need to, uh, figure some, some way that we could, uh, address that problem.
What, what kind of business is that? You said?
Well, we have these big gas, gas companies that are in the middle of town now. We have one, you know, two on fifty. We have one on eighty-six. So, I mean, those are businesses that really shouldn't be there at this point, you know.
So those, so those are not in the heavy industrial zone. So if you wanted to address some, we would have to also.
No, they're not in the heavy, but I think that's where they belong.
Well, that, that's what I'm saying. So, so you could do something that addresses this in the commercial zone, like older legacy businesses. So we get to look at that.
Okay.
Okay. Maybe we just like there was no proper notice for this one. You have to make sure you notice those people also.
Yeah.
We're going to talk about that. So.
Yeah, so, um, yeah, and then a couple of things I do want to refute on the comment letter. So this was noticed properly. So in the zoning ordinance amendment, uh, what we're required to do is notice in the paper. If this was a project, we would notice the project within three hundred feet. Because it's a zone, zone change, it's kind of like a citywide importance. It would be, um, a notice in the, in the paper. But the best thing to do in the situation is to outreach people that are affected. Right? So that's essentially what we need to do.
And it's not just the, I mean, it's the businesses that are being impacted as well, but I'm sure a lot of folks that work at IWP also live in the city. Um, so I think it's, yeah, the community. Yeah, yeah. So it's, it's, yeah, it's not just the business, it's also employees, right? Yeah, so.
Also in that, there's a company projects going in that on Avenue fifty-four in Titan, but is that Tyler, the street? So make sure that fifty-four, across the street from, yeah, across from the city offices are going to be that new manufacturing project that got approved. So making sure that they're also part of it because, yeah. So it doesn't blindside them in any way.
Yeah, sounds good. Thank you.
Okay, um, it's a good conversation to have for sure. Uh, because we are recommending to, oh, the commission has to make a motion, sorry, to whether we recommend to.
Eric, this is a public hearing item. So can you please open up the public comment?
So I do have to open up the public comment? Okay, thank you. Okay, so at this time at six forty-seven PM, we are going to open up the public hearing for item number five. Do we have any public comments at this time?
Yes. Hi, thank you. Uh, Dave Eisen with Imperial Western Products. Um, so a couple of items. The proposed amendment appears to be an arbitrary and discriminatory zoning as specifically targeting IWP zoning. That's one. Two, the city failed to provide adequate notice under code section six five zero nine and six five zero nine two. IB is requested in two thousand and eighteen that the city and any future zoning amendments that would impact our property, our employees and our future include proper zoning notification under government code six five zero nine two. The city is required to provide notice, which they did not do. Be assuming the zoning amendments affect less than a thousand property owners, the city must mail and deliver notice. That wasn't happening. Um, lastly, we were supposed to be noticed within three hundred feet if it's greater than a thousand people. So that is also something. Um, what we do here at IDVP, and we have been doing since the sixties, you guys annexed the property, right? But this is a cotton gin that's been around for over a hundred years. And to say that we can't do what we're doing, which is taking materials that we're going to landfill, right? We're taking all these destined materials and we're upcycling these things in the commodities. And we're diverting, that's lowering greenhouse gases for the state of California. And if you guys put us into a CUP versus a permitted use, our team behind me and all the seventy plus percent of the employees that we, we bring in, we put people through college, we, we pay them seventy percent higher than most of the, the average people live in this city is, we pay very, very well. That will handcuff us. One, two, we won't be able to expand. We can't recycle as much. That's going to have a negative impact on the environment and air quality for the city. We create biodiesel, which is eighty-seven percent cleaner burning than traditional petroleum. We'd like to partner with you, but we can't do that if you guys move us to the CUP. If you look at all of the, the strikeouts, eighty percent of those are only going to be applicable to IWP. So that's spot zoning. So be, be cognizant of that. What I recommend is you discontinue this completely. We've been around for a hundred years and we're going to be another hundred. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Do we have any other speakers?
Hello, my name is Jason Cabaniga. I'm actually the GM for Imperial Western Products. And like Dave was mentioning, we have a lot of employees there and I, I'd like to actually invite you guys to come visit our facility and see what we do. Um, not only do we recycle food waste, but we also recycle, uh, used cooking oil. We make over a million gallons a month of biodiesel, which is like he mentioned, clean brain alternative fuel. Another thing we do is we work with all of the local date growers. We take their waste and we turn it to animal feed. So you, you guys are more than welcome to come visit our facility. We'd like you guys to come out, um, just reach out to me and please take me upon the offer.
Thank you. Any other speakers? Do we have anybody online? Okay, seeing no other speakers, we're going to go ahead and close the public hearing at six fifty-one PM, commissioners. Can you put the recommendation up again, just so that we have that as reference? Thank you.
Well, I'd like to make the, the step or the motion to continue this item indefinitely. That way we could host some study sessions and be able to be more adequately, um, educated on what's going to happen with, uh, the rezoning and how it's going to impact our stakeholders. I would love to visit the site. So I'll definitely be contacting you.
I'm going to second, uh, Commissioner, now that is a recommendation. I, uh, I'm familiar a little bit with, um, what you guys do out there, IWP. I think it's an amazing outfit in terms of what you guys do in terms of renewable energy. And, uh, so I'm going to, I'm, I'm supportive of what you guys do out there. So just wanted to give you my, my opinion on it.
Uh, okay, um, do we have any other?
So this will be indefinitely until you are able to come up with a solution?
Yeah, so we'll probably, the, the idea would be meeting further with IDVP, probably Burt Tech, Arm Tech. I mean, those are the people that we think are probably affected by, by this ordinance. And then, um, have a further discussion with, with our city attorney to make sure that we have something that we can take back to Plan Commission. With the feedback, obviously.
We actually closed the public hearing. Yeah, apologies for that. Um, I did see that someone else in the audience also raised their hand and I realized that, uh, we did not say that we were having a public hearing in Spanish. And so we didn't take that into consideration. So I don't know if they knew that we were allowing people to speak now. And when we closed it, so I, I noticed that the gentleman there in white, he, you know, motion to have a comment, but I didn't say it in, in Spanish. So.
Okay.
I don't know if Henry.
Yeah, Chair, so since you guys haven't voted yet, um, the motion is still there. So you can reopen public comment and, and have them come up.
Thank you so much, Henry.
And, and I just want to, I just want to make you aware that if it is a Spanish speaker, she would get, um, double the time.
Okay, thank you. And what is the time? Three minutes? Minute? Three minutes? Okay. So at this time, we're going to go ahead and reopen the public hearing at six fifty-four.
You heard me speaking with my wife.
Yes.
Thank you. My name is Al, last name Alal. And I'm a neighbor to IWP. We're on the corner, Everhard Equipment. And I think what they do there is fascinating. We're not bothered by any of their food processing or recycling. Um we're not bothered by any of their food processing or recycling. We trade off, we loan them tractors to till some of the product. And I'm just in support of I W P and them continuing what they've been doing and. As the first gentleman said, a hundred years says something and they're still in business. And recycling is the wave of today. We need to recycle and um. Just wanna show my public support of I W P. Thank you.
Thank you. At you you are able to make public comment. Are they able to make it if they already spoke? Sorry. Henry, just making sure.
Yeah, I think you already provided comment, so Henry, I think that's.
Yes, okay, yeah, so you only gets one shot, yeah.
Sorry about that.
Sorry about that. Um okay, do we have any other public comments before we co- close the public hearing again? No. Okay, so at this time at six fifty six P M, we are going to close the public hearing. Um and commissioners.
I'm gonna stick with my motion.
Okay.
And I think you have a second, right?
Or we both, I just wanna make sure, you know, I still think the city should have. Really focused on what they did, but they did it sit for so long and, you know, coming back and then not properly doing. From what it seems like, you know, yes, the desert sun is the method then by the code. Right, but a lot of people don't read the desert sun and they don't really, you know, get notified. So how are you supposed to, you know? You know, following and they don't get the notice and and really being supported. So they don't have a. A supporter being able to be notified, that's kind of concerning for the community, especially, you know, business partners who are part of our community. So that's just a very important piece. Um for anything, so communication and transparency is very important, so.
Thank you. Any other motions before we take a vote? Okay, can we please get roll call?
Commissioner Figueroa?
No.
Commissioner Gonzalez? Commissioner Lial?
Hi.
Commissioner Anavarete?
Hi.
And Madam Chair, beat him.
I. Okay, so we're continuing the item and allowing for more conversation on this topic. Um. Okay, so we are going to move on to item number three at this time. And this is freestanding identification sign whenever you're ready, so.
Like you chair members of the plan commission. This item before you tonight is architecture review twenty two dash zero six and variance twenty two dash zero three. For freestanding identification sign for Everhard Equipment. Uh this is a site located at the corner of uh the northeast corner of Tyler Street and Avenue fifty four over two parcels. Uh they're proposing to install a twenty one foot freestanding identification sign. And these are some existing conditions photos, so this shows you um looking south on Tyler Street. And from Tyler Street at the uh site. Uh and these are existing conditions from Avenue fifty four. Um so you can see the frontage of their business, so they are open. The sign location is shown here, um and it would be that identification sign, I'll show you in a bit. There is an existing monument sign, actually it doesn't look like that. I believe they have a uh a sign over it right now, right? Yeah, so there wasn't a monument sign that was proved, um and they are allowed to have monument sign as long as it's no taller than six feet. That's at the corner. The applicants proposing this sign, uh so twenty one feet. But the the sign does exceed the minimum sign face. That's allowed in the code, which is seventy five square feet for uh as an industrial center that's more than two and a half acres. So this site is more than two and a half acres, so they're eligible for the seventy foot uh square foot assigned face. Um their assigned face is ninety five square feet. Oh, and looking back at the signs, you could see it's supported by the the support, which is um colored black. And then the sign face is two colors, black and and orange. Um there is a slight discrepancy between what you see on the left side and the right side. Cause it actually doesn't have the whole sign face, which would include the Coachella, California. So just to just point that out, it would be internally illuminated um and kind of like a block box sign. Uh as you could see in the site elevation, it just has kind of those protruding elements for um the capada sign. And also the the symbol uh for that business. As far as complying with their sign standards, they comply with uh most of them for setbacks. Uh for the type of sign, they can have that type of sign. It's either a six foot monument sign. Uh and they can have a sign on both front edges. Uh so at the max, they can have a twenty foot five, twenty five foot sign. Uh because they are more than two point five acres, actually three point eight six acres, so they're less than twenty five feet or at twenty one feet. So where they're incompatible is um with the size of the sign, the sign face. So they are proposing a sign of ninety six square feet, so twenty one square feet uh more than it's permitted in the code. Um they can't have an internal illuminated sign, so they are consistent there. Um so in order to meet the sign code, whether they're not able to do it with what's proposed. Uh we did suggest that they modify the sign size so that they can meet code and wouldn't have to go through the process of a variance. Uh but they would like to be considered for the variance. Um there are five findings the plan commission would need to make, uh and these are those five findings. Um staff, um in our opinion, we cannot make a few of these findings. Number one is is um. The practical difficulties or unnecessary hardship. And the second one is, you know, any special circumstances applicable to this property, like size, shape, topography or location. Um in our opinion, um this would be like um any other in- industrial business, which would be eligible to have a sign of twenty one feet. Uh seventy five square feet for the sign face. Um and you know, is there uh is it necessary for the preservation enjoyment of a substantial property right? In our opinion, they they can still have a sign out there. That would be twenty one feet, seventy five square feet for the sign face. The last two, um we would be able to make those findings, which is that it wouldn't be material tierly detrimental to the public welfare. Um and it doesn't adversely affect the elements of the general plan. So it's really those three findings that staff, we feel that we can't make for for the sign. So staff's recommendation is that the plan commission adopt the resolution that was prepared, which is for the denial. Of the architecture review and the variance uh proposed with the findings. That's the end of my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions and the opportunity to.
Thank you, Gabe. Okay, before we open up the public hearing, do we have any uh questions or comments from fellow commissioners?
I I don't know if I caught it, but is the sign lit or is it?
Yeah, internally, yeah.
I saw there's power lines on the design. How far is from the power lines? I saw a picture and I think uh. It's too close to the power lines, it's on property or.
They're pretty high up there. I I don't know what the 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 distance is, but they would. They would be setback from where the power lanes are, so.
So he signed, but this is now on the from the fence inside, right? It's gonna be outside of the fence.
Yeah, the location is is actually outside the fence, right?
It's gonna be on the inside because C B W D have a line. And C B C B W D came out and they.
Chair, do you wanna go ahead and bring the applicant up?
Yeah, give me one second. Sorry, we'll allow right now for um you to answer some of the questions. Let me just get more questions if they have any from the commissioners. Do we have any other comments or questions from commissioners before we open up the public hearing?
And just my question, the, I'm not sure if I caught it in the presentation, but the. There's just the explanation why it goes over that twenty one inches, is it because it's the standard size of the branding or? So if you can answer that.
Yeah, so so it's not the height of the sign.
It's the it's the width, yeah, I understand that, yeah.
And the, so the issue here is that the applicant has expressed that they purchased the sign as as it is. Right? It was a sign that was already produced, so they would like to use that sign. It's not like a special customized sign. So that's what was expressed to to us, but I'm sure that can kind of explain how that.
Is that the overall, uh you said twenty one inches or twenty one feet or, I mean, twenty one inches is.
Twenty one feet is the total height. And then the sign face, which was that, you know, like the orange part of the sign and.
Yeah, but what we're over how many?
Oh, yeah, yeah, twenty one square feet for over.
Is that on both sides or just one side?
Um well, we just count it.
You calculated one side or just?
It's just one side.
Okay, thank you. Do we have any other comments or questions from commissioners? Okay, so we're gonna go ahead and open up the public hearing at this time at seven oh six P M. And if the applicant would like to.
May I hand these out to the commissioner?
Yes, yeah, thank you. Thank you.
Okay, with all due respect, commissioners, uh but I just, what Gabe just handed out is. Sign that Kubota, our our tractor brand requires us to have for certification of being a Kubota dealer. Kubota is a Japanese origin tractor. They have five, six factories in in Georgia. And I'm uh I've been a dealer for Kubota tractor for thirty eight years. We were in um, I first started on the corner of eighty six, which is now Cesar Chavez and Avenue fifty four. Then it was Torrance's Farm implements. And um was there for thirty four years. Torrance has got bought out by Steven Everhart. He's the majority owner. Uh he also has um employees that have part ownership. I'm one of them. He believes in in that kind of uh business structure, so the employees can take care of the business when he's not around, and he's not around. Um so let me give you a little bit of history. I don't know if I repeated my name. I'm Al again, Al Al Al, A L L A L. I was born and raised here in Coachella, went through the school system and 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 I've seen Coachella transform into this. Nice, beautiful bud that's blooming. It's really remarkable and and I'm real proud of of the city. Uh just a a side note, my father also grew up here and he graduated from C B High in nineteen thirty nine. And uh his dream was to become a Air Force pilot. And he was one of the few Mexican Americans that became a fighter pilot in World War Two. And he flew the P fifty one. And I think you all know what a P fifty one is. It's like the hot rod of the prop airplanes. So much for that. Just give you a little history. So Kubota requires us to have this sign. And um we did purchase it. We had purchased it already and initially it was twenty eight feet. When we started with the city, we were able to call Sign Tech, professional professional sign company, say, hey, we can only go. We need the next step down, which was twenty one feet. So they were able to change that in process. And so we got the sign in, it's been sitting in our yard for the last six, seven months. It's a great looking sign, very professional, and I think once we get it up. Shall we be permitted? That'll be one of your better signs here in Coachella. Now, we're located on Avenue fifty four and Tyler. We have an alfalfa field to our south. We have an herb farm to our west. And we have uh two empty parcels to our north and to our east, we have Baja Boys and I W P. We're on the fringe of the city. We're not downtown. We are a tractor dealer and we are the only tractor dealer in the city of Coachella. My prior employment with Torrance's was in thermal, was in county. So when Stephen bought, Stephen Everhart bought uh the business. He said, okay, where should we build our our building? I said, Coachella. It has a lot of noriety. I'm from here and I'm proud of that. So part of the overage, if you look at Gabe's presentation, under the Kubota sign that you have in in the paper. I had um an addendum put on with the sign company. I had Everhard Equipment identifying us as a dealer. And I put Coachella. And the sign actually says Coachella, does not say Coachella, California. That's the rendition there and it's made up and between the Coachella. I believe Gabe is, how many square feet? Do you know?
Oh, the size of the little.
Yeah, the size of that and maybe even Everhard. If we were to subtract that. Or do away with it, we would be in compliance. But I find it very important to identify us, who we are. And to identify that we are proud to be in Coachella. That's why I had that put in and it cost us more money. We've paid over nineteen thousand dollars for the sign. And what gave or but with the denial of us putting up the sign that we have today. It was gonna cost us another fifteen thousand dollars. When we can buy more products, sell more goods and create more revenue for us and for the city. We have nineteen employees, most of them live here in the city of Coachella. So. I'm not gonna get into all the numbers and specifics and all that. I just wanna get our sign up. It's a beautiful sign and we probably would put it on the corner of of Tyler. And and fifty four, so it could be seen from both ways. And um because I probably don't wanna go through this again if we have to get another sign. Um. That's all I have to say. You know, I do have one comment though, and I noticed it today for the first time. Cause I'm looking around, I said, well, are there any other larger signs in Coachella? And I noticed driving down Highway one eleven, Avenue fifty two, where the bridge is at. You have uh todo fresco. Right, la tienda todo fresco. And it has like a big monument sign. Bigger than our sign, I I truly believe, that lists the price of gasoline. That's huge. I think that's bigger than our sign. So it's just another comment and um I wish that the commissioners and. Could um could approve this, so we can get our sign up. All I have to say.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Do we have any other uh public comment at this time? Yes, different item, so yes.
Yeah, my name is Jason Cabanuga. I'm at I W P and I've known Al all my life. And I actually went over to visit him to see that sign on the ground. And I think it's, I think it it needs to be put up. It's a beautiful sign. And maybe if you guys wanna consider, when you come visit me, come look at that sign that's sitting on the floor. But I just want you guys to take that into consideration. It's a good looking sign.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jason.
Any other public comment at this time?
I think this item is a very reasonable. I don't think it's extremely oversized. And I think it's something that we really should consider to approve. Uh I know I've always been in this community for a lot of years and. I support small businesses and and the fact that he put in Coachella, you know, has a price for our city. And if we exclude that, I think we would eliminate the twenty one feet, twenty one uh that we're over. So I'm gonna make a motion to.
Let me close the public.
Oh, I'm sorry.
One second. We're there. We're getting there. Okay, do we have any other public comments online? Okay, thank you. So at this time at seven fourteen P M, we're gonna go ahead and uh close the public hearing. Um commissioners, do you have a motion or any additional comments or questions?
Yeah, just to uh piggyback on what Commissioner Gonzalez is saying is that. I think it's important, right, that we recognize that Al's been here, been a great, great resident of Coachella. And it's very proud to be from Coachella. And I think it's not, it's it's reasonable for that twenty one square feet to be. Allowed, right? Not only did they spend nineteen thousand dollars, right, it would cost them money then. That money then to go ahead and remake the sign and then that excludes the recognition of the city.
That's a big burden for a small business, so.
Yeah.
I'm gonna make a recommendation to approve the project as presented.
So commissioners, one of the things, and then maybe Henry, you can help out with this. So you wouldn't be able to prove the science fake the resolutions for denial. So what we would do is prepare a resolution if that's what the. Plan Commission votes to do. At the next meeting, so the next meeting it would be brought back. But one of the things that we need to make is findings for approval. And so one of the things we can't say is the reason for approval is that they bought a sign and they can't put it up, right? That's that wouldn't be a reasonable finding. The one thing I did here, if you wanted to consider that. Is the applicant indicated they're at the fringe of the city and being able to advertise a sign. And make that their business visible. I could see that being different than. Other businesses that are not the fringe of a of a city. That's the only thing I heard from the applicant. And we usually ask applicants to provide us with findings that they think that they they can make so that we can approve a variance. That was that was one of the the findings that we probably. Could add to the resolution, because we have to make a resolution for approval.
Right.
Make the findings, so I just wanted to state that.
Okay.
Also, because you know, granting such friends would not materially determine the public welfare, so it won't harm anybody in that area. It'll actually, you know, create a space that, so it has no harm in either their neighbors or that zone, so.
Even though, even though I'm like the sign. I don't know how much traffic. To the sign gets along fifty four avenue. I think. I want eleven was a better place to put the sign instead of fifty four. I think that there's more traffic on the other one eleven, but. That's just one comment.
I we close the public hearing, sorry. Okay. Any other, and they do get traffic, actually. I pass through there every day, Cassie, so they get traffic for sure. Any other comments or questions about this item?
Growing up, I would ride tractors, my dad, so. I wrote these type of specific tractors in the very, very, I remember because they're orange.
There you go.
Orange tractor, you have the blue one that you used to sell before. Yes, or if you got unlucky, you had a Ford.
Oh, there you go. Okay, do we have a? Commissioner Gonzalez, did you make a motion?
Have to research the motion or?
Yeah, so that a resolution for approval of the variance architecture review be brought back to the plant commission at the next meeting.
So motion.
And Commissioner, can can you guys make sure to add the findings? Let let Gabriel know what findings to add to the resolution improving.
Yes, yeah, Commissioner Figueroa, he mentioned something, so I think he was gonna go ahead and.
So make the motion for the city staff to bring back the ordinance for variance approval. Noting the, if you can go back to the other one. Noting that such variance is necessary for the that it won't do. Won't granting variance will not have any material determined to the public welfare and also noted by the applicant that they're at the edge of the city and it won't have a. Possessed by the other property in the same zone, so it won't have any impact. Because of the location of their of their property.
Okay, thank you. Can we get a second?
I'll second that motion.
Perfect. And do we have any other motions at this time? Okay, can we get roll call, please?
Hi. And Chair.
Hi. Thank you. So we are going to move on to our next item. And this is item number four. Architecture review number. Yes, sorry, architecture review number twenty two dash zero seven.
Okay, thank you, Chair of the Plant Commission. This item will be pretty quick. So the applicant Chris Ellison for architecture review twenty two dash zero seven proposes a location for Jordan Central Implement Company. This is a location at the corner of Polk Street and Avenue fifty four on the northwest corner. So they are proposing a five thousand four hundred square foot industrial building where they would sell and lease retail farm equipment. Replacement parts and they would propose parking and onsite improvements, have industrial zone. So the applicant is is requesting that this item be continued and as the their correspondence has provided the staff report. That they want to go over some of the planning and engineering comments and conditions that we provided to them. They want to make some adjustments to their plan, so. Once they do that, they'll be ready to come back to the plant commission with revised plans. They don't have a date right now, so we would just do the same thing that this would. Just be continued definitely, and then we'll renotice item again.
Thank you, Gabe. We have to open up the public hearing for this one, right? Okay. Do we have any comments or questions from commissioners at this time? Okay, so at this time at seven twenty one P M, we're gonna go ahead and open up the public hearing for item number four. Do we have any public comments at this time? Okay. Do we have any public comments for item number four? Okay, seeing none, we're gonna go ahead and close the public hearing at seven twenty one P M. And would the commission like to make a motion?
Motion staff, motion of staff recommend a motion to continue the. Architecture review number twenty two dash zero seven as city staff communicated. Because they're the specific until they certain. Indefinitely.
Okay, go ahead and second, Dr. Figueroa's motion.
Any other motions at this time? Okay, can we get roll call, please? Okay, perfect, thank you. We are moving on to our informational item. Do we have anything from staff at this time?
Yeah, just a couple of things. Today, we released the temporary certificate of occupancy for Starbucks and. What I've heard is that they may be opening on the twenty ninth, so just keep a look at if you've seen the improvements starting to look pretty good. Great in that center. And let's see what else. The development status map. That's online has been updated with new projects, so if you were just curious about some of the other projects. We're just trying to populate it with, you know, as many of the projects that we know are out there. And so that's pretty good. Have a lot of the projects, maybe some of you. Weren't aware of some of the older projects and it's good for the community to know what's kind of going on with developments that are happening in the city. And then the last thing is we lost Nikki to the City of Palm Desert, unfortunately. So I hear, I definitely hear some of the comments about outreach and I appreciate that, so I will do the best I can. Because we are kind of short staffed, we are trying to recruit the senior planner position and associate planner position. The associate planner position is open, so it's help people apply, so that way we can make sure we're fully staffed and. Are able to kind of meet expectations of the plant commission.
Have an update on those, then you can, next time maybe update on the two new home constructions, the. The company that the parent company that is doing the pull two ones on fifty three and then when the model hostess was open for that. Ones on fifty. My post a point.
Or the.
The ones are called the Belissima.
The Belissima, so there's two projects, one's on fifty three and the other one is on fifty.
Yeah, Paul T is doing Belissima, it's a hundred eleven homes. I'm not sure when their models are gonna open up. I think their models are the ones that are on. Yeah, yeah, you know, I'm talking about. So so those would be the model homes and they're moving pretty quick, so they're actually pouring the foundations right now on more of the. In the development.
Some of them are like up, yeah.
The other project is in in those models look pretty good. They. They, the architecture is pretty good on that and so I'm. I'm not sure where they're at right now. I think I saw all the sticks went up, but I don't know if they're stuck going or plastering those ones yet.
Not yet.
Not yet.
I live through there, so I see them every day. Not yet, but they're they're moving quick, though.
The other development, Mari Posa Point, so they're actually moving pretty quick. That's the D R Horton project. And so they're trying to finish up those models. Those are the ones that you see that are almost done. I think they want to finish, open those up in the next two weeks. But the other thing to to be aware of for that development, twenty four of the lots are actually dedicated to Coachella Valley Housing Coalition. So we sold that property to the important. But under the State Surplus Land Act. We are required to make a certain percentage available to as affordable housing. So CB Housing. Owns those lots and they'll come back for approval for architecture for those homes that are the future date. So they're trying to stagger that construction after Gil Horton done with their homes. We are working on the landscape plan for the exterior, so one of the good things you'll see about that development, the landscape median Avenue fifty will be extended. All the way to Calhoun Street. And so.
I'm gonna fix that road that's like destroys your tires.
Yeah, it's destroying your tires.
It doesn't, but it's very bump injury, need some attention.
Yeah, so they'll get that attention. They actually had to move one of the CBWD ag lines and so that required a lot of work. That's what they're doing right now. But that landscape median will continue. We want to see the date palms continue and add some shade trees. And introduce lighting into the landscape media, so it'll look pretty good when it's when it's all completed. The walls up for that development. See what else. But but that's turning out to be a pretty good development. We did get an application for. You know where Rancho Las Porres Park is, so the development to the south, it looked like it was never finished, or the wall up there. Curbs and better. We did get an application for a track map to construct like new homes. For that development and that's on the status map for online, so if you want to see what's being proposed for those architectural models. They are proposing single family residences there.
Were those the ones that were supposed to be townhome?
Yeah, one time they were. There's been several different projects proposed proposed there, so originally Rancho Las Porres that you, there is one project that's called. Flores and it was supposed to be. A project that all went all the way to Avenue forty eight. And that project stopped, you know, around two thousand seven or so, so the the second phase never developed. It was supposed to continue north all the way to Avenue forty eight. And so all those entitlements expired. In the process, the city said this is where we need a regional park and that's where city bought the land to purchase. To to build a park, so originally all that was all gonna be homes at one time, but that plan changed. So but it's it's good that, I you know, my opinion that we're gonna potentially see some new housing. That's gonna make that corner look more attractive.
Thank you, Gabe, for that. Do we have any other informational items at this time?
Just one more update, you know, we mentioned. The sphere of influence request that the city had to Laco. So you know, that sphere of influence request wasn't was an honor at July meeting. But we did file for reconsideration, so one of the reasons we filed for reconsideration, Laco does say that. In order for a sphere of influence amendment to be considered, that it needs to be covered in your general plan, so the area that's covered in our general plan. East, west of the city is the area between. Jackson, Calhoun Street and down to Avenue fifty two, so there's a lot of ranch homes in those areas. And so so our our reconsideration request is, it isn't our general plan, right? It was, it wasn't stated to. Board that it's in our general plan. And therefore meets those prerequisites, right? And so it's not in the general plan for La Quinta. And it's on the general plan for the City of Indio. And so. That area actually used to be in the sphere of influence for the city and in two thousand and six it was taken away from the city, so. We're just asking for that to come back into the city, but we'll be doing some outreach to some of the property owners in that area. To see if there's support for that to happen.
We'll keep us posted on that. Okay, so at this time at seven twenty nine P M, we're gonna adjourn the meeting. Thank you, staff. Thank you, everyone.